Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mike Anderer from De Mariac Academy and I am here speaking as the co-chair of the Market Street for the Masses Coalition. And I am very pleased to tell you that the Market Street for the Masses Coalition has come to an agreement with Tidewater Capital and Warhorse on a community benefit agreement that I think represents a new collaboration for the sake of affordable housing in the Tenderloin. It is the formation of a partnership to explore models and develop a program that will identify and secure and preserve permanently affordable housing with neighborhood-serving retail on the Tenderloin. I just want to -- there are other people will comment about the agreement. I want to read to you some text from the agreement to show you the kind of partnership and understanding that this is. The project sponsor, this is from the agreement, "The project sponsor acknowledges that displacement is a key concern of the Coalition. Displacement can be caused not only by the construction of a lower percentage of affordable housing than that which currently exists in a neighborhood, but also by changes to a neighborhood's income and demographic profile, which can cause psychological and social displacement for existing residents, businesses, and nonprofit organizations. Further, the project sponsor recognizes that certain actions by new entrants to the neighborhood could negatively impact some or all of the existing residents, businesses, and nonprofits that have been part of this community for many years." The project sponsor acknowledges the Coalition's primary goal is to increase the number of permanently affordable housing units with neighborhood-serving ground-floor retail uses in the Tenderloin. Further, the Coalition is interested in advancing initiative around a site acquisition model. The need for such an acquisition program is especially important in light of the historical significance of the Tenderloin as a diverse neighborhood of marginalized people. Residents of the Tenderloin have led the way in social justice movements, especially the trans women and gay men who stood up for their rights at Comptons Cafeteria in 1966. And the Tenderloin has been a haven for creativity and artists for generations, notably musicians at places like the Hyde Street Studios and Black Hawk Night Club. Given the historical significance of the area, the acquisition program shall include within its mission the goal of increasing through both preservation and creation permanently affordable housing with neighborhood-serving ground-floor retail uses for historically marginalized communities with rich histories of activity in the Tenderloin, including no and low-income residents, families, people of color, and the local LGBTQ community. I am happy to inform you that the Market Street for the Masses Coalition supports this project.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Very excited to be in your house today again. I'm a 32-year Tenderloin resident. Kind of love my neighborhood. You know, it's been a long time coming for us to get more dignity in our neighborhood. This is a project I see revigorizing two neighborhoods. There are two neighborhoods involved in this project which is very unique. That's the Market Street corridor and the Golden Gate corridor. Both have been fairly neglected on that block. I've seen that block go through a lot of changes. I run a historical tour in the Tenderloin and Midmarket, and ironically, I run it out of 1028 Market. And we'll run it out of the new 1028 Market after you approve it here today. So it's going to be something that we've been looking for a long time. We need that chroming glass in the Tenderloin. We're tired of being scared row. We're tired of being scared row. I know we look bad sometimes, we smell bad sometimes, but we need to come up. We need to step our game up. And this is the way we can. I've talked to the guys that are running this, developers, contractors, and man, I have nothing good, nothing but good to say about them. I've researched some of their other projects. They've done some wonderful things. We need a project like this bad. You know, it'll be more jobs for our neighborhood. Those 25 percent, those 25 affordable housings will be sorely needed. I also chaired a homeless board downstairs in City Hall. And believe me, housing is one of my number-one things. This could solve so many problems and make our neighborhood look a lot better. So I'm asking you today to consider this program to the utmost. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Commissioners. Randy Shaw, Director of the Tenderloin Housing Clinic. Some of you know, this is the third major project on the same row. 1066 Market, the Shorenstein project, which got unfortunately delayed. The Joyal project, the Group I project, which also was delayed, but I think is going to be resolved and soon started. And this is the third one. And this is a vital project. That side of Golden Gate is such a problem. Having that parking lot, it's just at the wrong location. And what we have with these three developers, Shorenstein, Joy, and Craig Young of Tidewater and his partner, Scott Plank, is people who really care about this neighborhood. And I think that's what has been, sometimes developers come in, they just want to get their project entitled and sell it, or they want to just build something and sell it. These folks all have a real commitment, long-term, to the Tenderloin. So as the prior speaker said, they've already made commitments for historic tours. All three are ingrained in the neighborhood. And that's why this is a really special project. And I don't think you'll even find anyone opposing this project, which is a rare situation when you deal with development in this city. There's always somebody who opposes nonprofit projects. So this is something you should all be proud of. It's the last one in the sequence, and hopefully by the end of the year, all three will have broken ground. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Seamus Canning, and I am the Principal of Canning Electric and the CEO of Petri Construction Remodeling. I have known Tidewater teams since they bought the 1028 Market Street in 2013. I support the 1028 Market Street development. I have worked on numerous construction projects in the Midmarket area and observed the unique way in which Tidewater is approaching the 1028 Market Street development project. Firstly, created the hall as an intern use, whereas most developers would just let an old vacant building fall in on itself. The hall has become a favored community gathering place and also created over 30 jobs for the local community. 1028 Market will create over 200 new jobs during its construction phase. Good-paying jobs that folks in the trades really need. I support the 1028 Market Street project. I believe the development will be good for the neighborhood. The city badly needs more housing. And the 1028 Market Street project will provide 186 new units, including 25 onsite BMRs, along with renewed retail, which will enliven the neighborhood. Thank you for your time. I urge you to support the 1028 Market Street project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Charlie Rimkus. I work at Jones Lang LaSalle here in the city. I'm going to frame my support through a short anecdote about Tidewater and Craig and the essence they bring to the neighborhood. I was introduced to Craig Young last year through a mutual friend. He explained to me Craig's passion for the community and said he was someone that I had to meet. Couple weeks later, met at his office just blocks around the corner from the project. And what I saw in those two blocks was really the essence behind what is currently at the hall and what will be at 1028 Market Street. During that walk, we were stopped by three people, all of who knew Craig on a first-name basis and vice versa. They welcomed him with open arms. They asked him how he was doing. It was a true community setting. They weren't real estate executives, they were fellow citizens of the Tenderloin. It's a little bit rare to have a developer welcomed with such open arms on your own street sometimes. And when we got to the hall, I really saw why they welcomed him like that. The word that I used to describe the situation was it was buzzing. It was the middle of the week, middle of the day, not much going on, but the environment in there was ecstatic. There was music playing, people meeting over coffee, people interacting with the vendors. It was clear the organic community, jobs, and opportunity that the space had created for the community. And it's my opinion that after seeing the proposal, meeting Craig, meeting his team, that the proposed project will provide continued and enhanced support for the community through job creation, much-needed below-market housing, further engaged retail, and neighborhood and artist support. Combine that with the sponsor's passion, vision, and clear commitment to civic duty, I think it's a win for all sides. So I strongly urge you to support 1028 Market Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rimkus. Next speaker, please.
My name is Cameron Moberd. I'm a longtime resident and local artist in the area. Community activist, working with the community alongside city crossroads with a lot of the families that live in the SROs and things like that. When I was 15, I started to go down to a rec center in the SOMA. And then shortly after, you know, as I grew up, I actually moved into the neighborhood and lived there for 17 years. So I've seen it change over the years. I've seen my share of people come in and out. Back in the day, people would move in, in smaller amounts of people, and they would learn to integrate into the culture. In recent times, it's proven to be different with just the mass amount of tech and developers coming into the area. It seemed a shift. It seemed to be the opposite, like the mass amounts of people were setting a new culture. But for me, this wasn't the case with Tidewater. They have been very intentional about integrating into the existing culture and enhancing it with things like the hall. They came in, they saw what the people were doing and what they needed, and they provided a space. A place for small startup restaurants, a place for the arts, and a place to provide jobs. These things have always been in the DNA of San Francisco. They allowed me to raise funds for city crossroads. I was able to curate art and music events in their space, and they even donated a lot of the proceeds back into the community to city crossroads. They opened their space for job fairs for youth. They provided free dinners for our kids, you know, times for them to come in and visit the space and hang out. I love the people in the Tenderloin, and I love the people in the Sixth Street corridor. And they are often overlooked and misunderstood. Tidewater has not overlooked them, and they sought to understand us and our culture. They gave chances for neighborhood folks to have jobs. Six and Market has dramatically changed for the better. Trust me, I've been on the block for a long time, and it's the first time in a long time there's been sustainable business and jobs that could really make an impact and change the way the neighborhood looks. So I appreciate and support Tidewater and the building project at 1028 Market, and I hope you can do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon again, Commissioners. Corey Smith, on behalf of the San Francisco Housing Action Coalition. Since I started this about a year ago, I've probably spent more time on this project than any of the other projects that I've been involved with. That's mainly because, as previously mentioned, they did hold monthly community meetings Wednesday mornings to make sure that they were hearing from the neighbors. And I think we absolutely really need to commend them on that. Additionally, our organization hosted multiple happy hours there. They were always very, very generous. And I think just the overall project sponsor's attitude towards how to work with the community has really, really been impressive. I know they asked a lot of questions of us and of other people that are more involved in this world from the very get-go to make sure that they were doing things the right way. As far as the project itself, I think the food court is really an indication of how they view ground-floor retail. And just to echo Mr. Seymour and Mr. Shaw's comments earlier, they're really, really cognizant that what is facing Market Street is very different than what is facing Golden Gate. And I distinctly remember the community meetings that we've had around ground-floor retail. And they were asking people, what type of services do you want to see? And they were really specific on locations, because they wanted to make sure that the people that were going to be interacting on that street felt as if it was part of their neighborhood. And those attention to details are not something that is super common, but is really, really valuable. And I absolutely think that because of what they've done to this point, we have every belief that they will continue to do that going forward. The parking is absolutely appropriate for the area. It is going to be a major transit hub, and we will always do what we can to encourage less parking, more bike parking in the area. They are meeting the inclusionary requirements based on June's Prop C trailing legislation, although we would like to encourage sponsor to look at the inclusionary dial to see if we can get more BMRs on-site. I get a warm fluttery feeling every time I see all these fine men and women in vests behind me, so we know this is going to be built for people, built by people that are being paid good living wages. And just to bring it right back, I mean, it's the community input. You don't get this many people to show up to these hearings in the middle of the day unless they've done right by the community. So all in all, we absolutely support this project without any hesitation and ask you to approve it unanimously today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, President Hillis and Commissioners. My name's Adrian Seamy, Field Representative for Carpenter's Local 22. And behind me, in the back of the room here, we've got about 25 members of our carpenters in action that are here in full support of this project. It's through Tidewater and their choice of general contractor, Nibby Brothers, that we have a long relationship with in San Francisco. It's going to be 100% union job, providing over 200 good-paying union jobs to workers in San Francisco. Remember, these are temporary jobs. Construction is temporary. We move from one job to the next, so it's not like it's permanent. There will be permanent jobs on there. But for us, we need to keep this going. And this is one project that's just part of that, that we stand behind. It's 186 units of residential. We know that San Francisco can use that. The below-market rate, we can use that too. And we're looking forward to going to work here and hope that you will approve this project, and we thank you today.
Thank you, Mr. Seamy. Next speaker, please.
Hi there. My name is Ben Davis. I'm the founder and CEO of Illuminate. That's the nonprofit arts organization that brought you the Bay Lights. And then our next project we're working on with the help of some folks in this room and certainly in this building and the community behind me, is a two-mile-long art installation on Market Street called Light Rail. We've been fortunate enough to be able, through the generosity of Craig and his team, to make 1028 our de facto headquarters for that project. And I think this project makes sense on all the obvious reasons. It makes sense in terms of housing in our city and along a transit corridor. I think it's a beautiful expression, a thoughtful expression. But Illuminate's mission is to rally large groups of people together to create impossible works of art that through awe frees humanity's better nature. And it's on that topic of humanity's better nature that I just want to comment, not on this building, and I hope it stands on its own, but really, the gentlemen behind me who are not making a promise as developers of showing their better nature once this project goes forward, but have demonstrated a track record of unleashing that better nature upon our community and activating that community with them. Their three-year track record is incredibly impressive. I've been directly affected by it, and the community that we're working on through Illuminate is a beneficiary of it. And I just think that that sort of clear dedication to not just having a concern about the texture of your building, but really the fabric and strength of the community that live outside the doors of that community, can't be overstressed in terms of the folks we want to say yes to and we agree about every other value of their projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. We'll call some other additional speakers, too. Axel Boren, Rob Poole, Karen Frost, Alvin Padilla, David Seward, Seamus Canning. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Zach Sharp, and I'm with the Alabama Boats Bluegrass Band. And I think it's, I think I can kind of represent the bluegrass community as a whole in San Francisco. And by saying that we definitely support this project, you know, the bluegrass community is a very vibrant one here in the Bay Area, but there are very few places that support The hall, which is the temporary site that Tidewater's set up, has been a real hub for these musicians and for these people. In addition, you know, six years ago, I went back to school for sustainable business, and I learned that, you know, business is more than just money. It's the people, the community, and also the environment. And I think, you know, having gone to that school in San Francisco, the Market corridor has been a long, like, you know, running issue and, you know, problem that people are trying to address. And so watching this project come to life, you know, the hall particularly, has really kind of been the perfect case study to how to approach a development project with, you know, people in mind, the community in mind. So I strongly urge you to support the project, and thanks for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Jacob Shea. I'm at Structure Capital. We invest into local companies, and I'm here to support the 1028 Market Street project. I support Craig and Scott and what they've done. I have friends who live in Baltimore, and I've seen their success in Baltimore, and I really appreciate what they've done. I lived on Ethan Howard for about six years now, and I walk through the area every day tooth-toed eye. And I spend about once a week in the hall, with meetings, coffee, dinner, and just finding friends over. And what they've done in the last several years has been amazing, and we need more of this. And I just support the 1028 Market Street project and really want to be behind it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name's David Seward. I'm with Hastings College of Law, University of California. We support this project. It will help activate the community. We have 1,000 students, faculty, and staff. And over time, that cohort of people, those individuals, have had far more opportunities to engage and interact with the neighborhood. I want to compound Ben Davis's comments. The Tidewater crew has been integrating with the neighborhood for three or four years and have proven their good intentions by actions. I serve on community boards with Russ of the organization. They are committed to the community. This is about building a community, not just about building a building. And we support it very much. It will help activate that stretch of market, which is still a work in progress, and this project needs to go forward and go forward quickly. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Seward. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Alvin Padilla. First of all, thank you very much for your service. I'm here to speak on behalf of the project. I live 83 Macalester, about a block and a half away. I've lived there for seven years now. I've done a lot of community advocacy work in the Tenderloin, primarily with neighborhood, youth, and arts nonprofit organizations. I met Mr. Young, Craig Young, project sponsor, shortly after he arrived in San Francisco. He's always been totally welcoming and very gracious and generous in all my frequent, endless requests to introduce him to neighborhood arts groups in particular. The answer was always yes. So I wanted to thank him for that publicly now. Also have appreciated very much the presence of the hall. In a previous life before the arts, I did a lot of work in community food security and community farmers' markets. And it's a very powerful dynamic insofar as food, markets, and encouraging socioeconomic engagement and activity among peoples that otherwise would not engage with each other. And I'd like to give a shout-out to Ilana Lipsit. She's somewhere in this room. For a couple of years now of just dynamic programming, bringing all kinds of folks from the neighborhood together. Lastly, I'd like to also express support for the income diversification that this project will bring. I think there are often voices of fear about newcomers arriving. But one of the remarkable things about the Tenderloin is that the housing stock is overwhelmingly protected. So we have a remarkable opportunity here to move forward with income diversification without the common threat of displacement. And by the way, literature is everywhere in terms of the benefits for poor folks when they live in mixed-income communities. This project will help move the Tenderloin to a more mixed-income community. If you'd like to see the literature yourself, you can go to the websites of any big public health foundation or Housing Urban Development. Though the Housing Urban Development, you may want to visit the website now because it might be deleted by tomorrow. Anything that has to do with the welfare of people, better jump on the website now because it may be gone tomorrow. So very much support the project. Thank you all for your service, and thank you, Craig and Ilana.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Said Nusayba, and these are unplanned comments. I was here for another item. I worked for many years at the Jones Street Mosque on a public mural that folks faces towards Market. And I just am unfamiliar with this project. I want to put a voice in for a marginalized community. That's the Muslim community that worships in that adjacent building. I'm a little concerned that personally, that that mural will be occluded. And all the talk of community, I'm not hearing that religious community mentioned, even though people are coming there five times a day. So I would just ask you, because I'm not aware of this, I haven't talked to the members of that congregation about their feelings about this project, but I'm alarmed that their voice and their participation in that community is not being heard. And I'm very grateful that there's an investment effort in the area. Rejuvenation is vital, but I would like to know how inclusive that center of community will actually be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Axel Boren. I'm a project executive with Nibby Brothers General Contractors. My company was fortunate enough to have been selected as the builder for 1028 Market Street project, and we very much look forward to our partnership with Warhorse, Tidewater Capital, Olympic Residential Group, and SCB Architects. I'm here to show my support for the 1028 Market Street project. I believe this development will be good for the neighborhood. The city desperately needs more housing, and the 1028 Market Street project will provide 186 new units, including 25 below-market rate units, along with new retail, which will enliven the neighborhood. Through their creation of the site's interim use, the hall, Tidewater has shown its deep commitment to the central market and Tenderloin. And I know they will continue to develop in a way that benefits the whole community. The 1028 Market Street project will create economic opportunity across many sectors. During construction, the project will create over 200 jobs hired through Nibby Brothers, a union-signatory general contractor. And we thank you guys for your support today. We also work closely with CityBuild to ensure employment opportunities are provided to San Francisco residents who are in the trades. Additionally, Nibby prides itself on working collaboratively with OCII, CMD, to provide opportunities to small businesses and San Francisco businesses, and this project will be no different. In the city where the cost of living has soared, creating over 200 well-paid jobs will be significant for those in the trades. Once the building is complete, there will be five new permanent positions required to operate it, and the ground-floor retail will also create about 20 new permanent jobs. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I urge you to support the 1028 Market Street project.
Thank you, Mr. Boren. Please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Karen Frost with Larkin Street Youth Services. I am the CFO, so I'm usually quarantined to my office and not let out, so pardon me for my nerves. I support 1028 both by being in Larkin Street Youth Services and our participation in Market Street for the masses. So there's two folds there. Larkin Street has worked closely with Tidewater and the team in the hall for the past few years. The hall has hosted our youth and has made it admirable effort to engage on issues. They're also talking with us about the potential of training and making sure that not only the learning, teaching our youth to be, how to be workers as well, so that we are enabling our youth to have sustainable jobs. And with Market Street for the masses, as Mike had alluded to earlier, that we're looking forward to working with them on creating a new structure for the organization and for the Tenderloin to have ownership in there and to move forward on that. Thank you, and I support 1028.
Thank you, Ms. Frost. And we'll call some additional names. John Butler, Brenda Juarez, Lowell Calder, Hunter Franks, Paul Pendergast, and Neil Shaw. Mr. Poole.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Rob Poole here. I'm just speaking on behalf of myself. And I would not normally do this for a project that Hack has been involved with, but the hall holds a special place in my heart. I've been going there since day one. I was so stoked when I heard that this idea was coming. And I like to think I'm their first regular. I've had dinner with both my parents there. I've had dinner with, you know, hung out with friends there. I got to speak at one of their monthly breakfasts. I listened to a talk on universal basic income, heard great jazz there, and I never stopped going. And even when the Peruvian chicken place went away, I still kept going. So, but I think more importantly, you know, this was a really risky but innovative concept. I mean, you would not see this hardly, I don't think you see this very often anywhere in the country, probably. But this place has been such a great platform for bringing people together who probably would have not interacted otherwise. And it's been a venue for nonprofits to showcase the great work they do. It's made people more aware of other initiatives taking place in the city. The jobs fairs that they've held there were fantastic. And, you know, that's a testament to the ladies and gentlemen with the Tidewater SCB and Ilana with those teams. And they didn't have to do any of this, but if they spent that much time to do a voluntary effort to integrate this site with the community, I much time to do a voluntary effort to integrate this site with the community, I think you can have a lot of faith that they're going to deliver a terrific project. And let's back to the basics here. 186 homes along the most robust transit line in the West Coast across the street from major employers. Like, that's basically good land use 101. So, you know, I'm going to miss the Hall. I hope they find a new location. But I'm really excited for the potential that these new homes will bring. And I think it'll be great to have Tidewater as a neighbor there in a new capacity. And I really hope you support today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Poole. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is John Butler. I'm the new executive director of the Tenderloin Economic Development Project. We're focused on equitable development throughout the Tenderloin. I'm a newcomer to the scene. I've been in this job for two weeks. But every day I have run by this location for the past four years. I've watched it every hour of the day. And the reason that I took this job is because every day I run through the Tenderloin and I wondered what I could do to help. In the last two weeks, I've spoken with a wide variety of community leaders from Del Seymour to St. Francis Foundation to people at Hastings Law School, some of you. And every road has led to a discussion about this project being a model for sustainable development, a model for economic diversification, and a model for community engagement. So as executive director of the Tenderloin Economic Development Project, I'd like to support this project wholeheartedly. And also to mention that in the last two weeks, I've just been discovering this project. Every single person has spoken very, very positively to it. And I think I'd like to echo the comments that were made at the beginning of this, that there does not seem to be meaningful opposition to it. And I think that's significant in this area. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Lowell Calder. I'm the owner of a small business in the Tenderloin. I've lived and worked in the Tenderloin for about six years. I've known the Tidewater team socially for about three years because I spent a lot of time at the Hall. I've known them most recently because they're my landlords. I recently moved into one of their other buildings that's on the block. And I would just like to speak to their skill as retail, as they kind of review and select retail tenants. I know that they said no to other people who were looking at the space. My business is a dental office, which is a much-needed service in the Tenderloin. The nearest dental office is in the financial district. And so I think that it did a really good job of kind of finding it, really sensing the needs of the neighborhood and bringing in the retail tenants that the neighborhood needs. I think they'll do the same thing for the new building. And as a business owner, I'm just excited about what else they'll do. I think they'll be excellent stewards of the block. And I wholeheartedly support 1028 and I hope you guys do too.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Brenda Juarez and I'm one of the tenants at the Hall. And we support this new building. We've been there for two years and a half. And we've created seven jobs now throughout the Hall. And now we are just hoping to, or for, support them on what they're doing. My mother couldn't come, but she sends a lot of support to them. And my mother's part of La Cucina. And they gave us a great opportunity to start our first storefront. And that just puts us in a position more ahead than another business like us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Juarez.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Paul Pendergast. I actually have the honor of serving as the Director of Public Policy for the Golden Gate Business Association, which is the nation's first LGBT Chamber of Commerce. And I also get to serve as the President of the San Francisco Small Business Network, which represents 12 different business organizations in the city. I was really heartened to hear the staff talk about the historic nature of LGBT businesses in the community to this district. And I want to underscore that we continue, from our community's perspective, to make history when Equator Coffees, which is just one block away from the 1028 property, became the nation's first LGBT business in the country to be named the nation's Small Business of the Year. Equator has worked with the 1028 folks. They're providing jobs. They're providing opportunities for resources. When you talk to all the small businesses who are really pioneers in that mid-market period, they really, these are businesses who are fighting every day to make bank in order to pay the rent and so forth. These are not the large businesses. These are the small businesses who are creating jobs for the people in the neighborhood. When I hear Dell Richards talk about the importance of community in small business, when I see how he has worked with the people with 1028, this is music to my ears. And when the San Francisco Council District Merchants and other organizations are coming to the Hall to use that as a model, that's when we have a success story. So this is really a potential small business success story in the making. So thank you very much and I heartily express my support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pendergast. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Hunter Franks. I'm a community-based artist. I've worked in the central market neighborhood for about four years now. Tidewater assisted me in carrying out several temporary public art projects on Sixth and Market that engaged people and encouraged connection between folks walking by. In a city where the cost of living has continued to soar, Tidewater has shown their deep commitment to the creation of more housing, as well as community engagement and radical openness and empathy. Just one example of this is instead of calling the police and trying to get rid of the drug dealers that often hang out in front of the building there, they decided to partner with the police and put on a job fair for those very folks. I think that they've shown their true heart and love for this community, and that will continue with the 1028 development. I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Danny Campbell. I'm a representative with the Sheep Metalworkers, local union 104, and as well as a delegate to the San Francisco Building and Construction Trades Council. I'll keep it brief. We wholeheartedly support this project. I heard somebody say that it's a model project for sustainability. I couldn't agree more. When you have housing close to transit, and when you have below-market-rate housing onsite, that's a win for the city. And when you have a developer like Craig Young here in Tidewater commit to the local union construction community, that the workers building this project will be making good middle-class wages with healthcare and retirement benefits, means that our members still have a chance to live in this city and hold on to the American dream, the middle-class dream. So we look for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. I'll call some more names, John Schwark, Richard Perry, Javier Flores, Laura Clark, Sonia Trousse, Scott Feeney. That's all. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Curtis Bradford and I'm the President of the East Tenderloin Community Residents Association and also the Tenderloin People's Congress and a long-term resident of the Tenderloin. I live at 230 Eddy Street, just a couple of blocks from the project. So I'm here today to speak in support of the project for several reasons. One, I think they've shown an outstanding level of commitment to try and engage with the community, to become an integrated member of the neighborhood and the community. Often developers seem to take the attitude of actually trying to dominate the neighborhood or take away or displace the neighborhood in order to impose their vision. These people have actually made an attempt, a real attempt, I think, a real effort to actually engage with and become a member and participate as a neighbor in the community. And I think that's pretty exemplary and kind of rare. And I would think they should be rewarded for that. And they've actually shown a real commitment to the idea of continuing that relationship moving forward long-term, like in terms of helping us with one of the Tenderloin's visions of creating an acquisition fund and working with us on creating that. And providing their expertise and talent and helping us move that forward, I think, is a tremendous asset. And I think that there's a real potential. There are a commitment to having small-based retail serving on both Golden Gate and Market Street side. You know, I just think that there's a real benefit here for having a long-term working relationship in the neighborhood as actually a participant, a real part of the community. And so I look forward with continuing to work with them. And I hope that you will approve this project, you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Ms. Honor, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. I'm so sorry, everybody. I didn't mean to cut in line. I didn't realize that I was doing that, so I apologize. My name is Lisa Zoner. I'm the Executive Director of Urban Solutions. Normally, I'm not such a scofflaw. I am here today to express our support of the 1028 Market Street project and Tidewater in particular. Over the last three years, I've worked very, very closely with Craig and Ross to emphasize to them the importance of maintaining ground-floor retail space in the mid-market area. And not only enormous ground-floor retail space, but regular-size, small-business-size, ground-floor retail space. And Craig and Ross have made a commitment to supporting our small businesses here in San Francisco, which are the lifeblood of our economy and which add so much richness to our neighborhood. I strongly urge you to support this project because we really believe that it's going in the right direction and it's really going to improve our neighborhood and our small businesses. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, commissioners. My name is Honey Mahogany and I'm here representing the Comptons District. We, as the Comptons Coalition, are trying to establish a transgender-friendly and affirming district in the Tenderloin. As many of you know, the Tenderloin is one of the last places with affordable housing and also one of the last places in the city that is safe for transgender women, specifically transgender women of color. We've had several conversations with Craig. He's been absolutely charming and wonderful. And we are working towards coming to an understanding of how we can move forward together in creating a safe space for one of our city's most vulnerable populations. That being said, we do want to do our due diligence and say that we are concerned that if proper mitigations are not met, that we, as a city, are really putting a very vulnerable population at risk. And we don't want to see that happen. So we are here to raise that concern and to say that we are waiting to see whether or not this will indeed be a threat or we will be able to work together to achieve proper mitigations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Javier Flores. I'm with the Labor Local 261. And I'm here to support the project of 1028 Market Street. I believe this project will be good for the neighborhood and also for the community. Possible, some of our members will benefit from the project. This project will create economic opportunity across many sectors, especially for our members, from the community resident and apprentice, which also, you know, often they got hurt by the project. You know, and this particular project is a win-win situation for any trade, any related with the construction industry. I'd like to touch a little bit about Nibby and Tidewater. Nibby is probably one of the best companies up there to work for, hired, you know, from all different community residents, apprentices. Just recently got 2000 Safety Award Excellence in Safety by accumulating 1 million hours without lost time or incident. That's about two and a half years without having an incident. And that will tell you a really good opinion about a company like this, who will take care of members and do the right thing for the community and anybody working for them. So I congratulate Nibby. And we're looking forward to work with Nibby and Tidewater. I encourage you to vote yes and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Ms. Clark.
Hi, Laura Clark. Grow San Francisco, becoming Yimby Action. Just so you guys know, going forward, I'll be Yimby Action. This is an easy one, obviously. I think it's universally appreciated. There's lots of gravy thrown in and extras and community engagement. It's a great project. It's an easy one. But I want to remind you that just building housing is a net good. Just building housing is a public good in this housing shortage that we're experiencing. And not every project is going to be able to offer these kinds of bells and whistles. And as developers have learned that the bar is really high, they have gone through, you know, a lot of work. And the big developers can afford to do this, but the smaller projects can't. Not every project is going to be able to deliver the kind of amazing extras that this one does. And so I hope you remember that even just building housing is good. And so while it's easy to support this one, there are other ones that are going to be more difficult to support. And I hope that they will still, that we're not going to require everybody to have shadow movies because not everyone can afford shadow movies. These are things that we're going to need to continue saying just building housing is a good thing. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Trousse.
Hi, my name is Sonia Trousse. I live at 7th and Natoma. So I'm in support of 1028 Market Street. Please certify the final environmental impact report. And also while I'm here, sorry, I'm in support of 13 of the next item also, which adds 2,000 new residential square feet to our city. That's a small project. This is a big project. And they're both great examples of development without displacement because in both cases, nobody had to be displaced in order for these new things to get built. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, planning commissioners. My name is Scott Feeney. I am a resident of the Mission. I took time off work to be here today as a volunteer member of the San Francisco Bay Area Rinters Federation. People have already said most of the things that I was going to say, I think, so I'll make it brief. I think this is a great project. It's the perfect place to include a lot of new housing, which we need. It's well-designed. And I think that this developer really went above and beyond for the community by activating the space temporarily with the Hall, which I'm a big fan of. So I urge you to please support 1028 Market moving forward today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good afternoon, commissioners. My name is Neil Shaw. I've lived in San Francisco for the last four years. And I've known the Tidewater team for about a year. Currently, I'm the co-executive director of a nonprofit concern and also the co-founder of a benefit corporation called Apprenta. And when I look at the type of people in this community, the main things that I observe and interact with are values and action and stakeholder capitalism. And from everybody that you've heard from in this room, from the general contractors to the local business owners, the nonprofit providers, it's clear evidence that Craig, Ilana, Ross, and the rest of the Tidewater team are invested in this community. About a year ago, when I joined and was a director at Code Tenderloin along with Del Seymour, I hosted job fairs and organized them with Ilana Lipsit. I was involved very ground-level with day-to-day activities at the Hall. And most importantly, as a workforce development nonprofit and running employment, they gave five people that we worked with chances to work there. And not only gave them a chance, they gave them a second chance, a third chance, and a fourth chance. When I was attending these 1028 project updates, I had a lot of questions. I had a lot of questions about how much housing was going to be committed, BMR housing, who they were going to use to build the building. And when I learned that 25 permanent jobs are going to be created, I'm very confident in this team. The other thing I look at when I look at the future of Market Street and the Tenderloin is my concern for the community. And there's no better demonstration of future action than past action. The Hall, I think, is an example of innovation. And it's an example of what we want to see in our neighborhoods. And I'm really, really glad to know that 9,000 square feet is going to be dedicated to retail, neighborhoods serving retail. Because I know, by knowing Craig, Ilana, and Ross personally, that they're going to invest in giving people opportunities for the long term in this neighborhood. So I strongly support this project. I also think it's an easy approval. And I really look forward to hearing that the committee approves. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Next speaker, please.
Hi, commissioners. My name is John Schwark again. And I live across the street from this project in the Home Skillet Building. So many of you, we've been talking a lot about how it's the Hall building. And I want to talk about the other buildings around it in regards to the question about the EIR in terms of neighborhood scale and character and things like that. So I think the developers have done a really good job of trying to fit this, you know, you saw in their presentation of trying to fit just the overall shape in on the corner space in terms of the tall, short, tall, short rhythm of the neighborhood. That's great. But the former Show Dog building, which is right next door, is going to be permanently short. It's a historic resource and they've got the development rights from them for their height. And then also the World of Stereo building next to 1066, what you're going to see is a block that goes short, tall, tall, short. And it lets light in on the corners, just like the temple banks and the other structures going down Market Street. So it fits really like the temple banks and the other structures going down Market Street, so it fits really well in, in that regard, and we're all pretty happy about it. If I had to say anything, I'm a little sad you won't be able to see the Golden Gate Theater walking up Market anymore. I do have, you know, some nostalgia about that beautiful building, but the fact that they're doing a really great outdoor art thing is an asset to our very artistic neighborhood. It's some, we have a neighborhood where when you walk through, art is right there in your face, and it, you can tell that people care and want to keep it an artistic space, and these developers, I've not even specifically trying to go, I've run into at the Hall twice now, part of their art outreach, so I think they've done an excellent job of seeing what people in the neighborhood wanted and coming up with a great thing to enhance that aspect of our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Alexandra Goldman. I am the Community Organizing and Planning Manager at the Tenderloin Neighborhood Development Corporation. I'm also on the Steering Committee of Market Street for the Masses, and I'm here today to express my support for the 1028 Market Street Project. Just briefly, because I know you've heard a lot of the great points, we are extremely enthusiastic about the prospect of an acquisition fund. It's something that activists in the neighborhood have been working towards for four or five years. It's something that a group of organizations in the Tenderloin have all prioritized through our anti-displacement process, and it's increasingly important to look at alternative ways of securing affordable housing in the next four years when we might see some issues with public funding on that front. I also understand that the city is open to this prospect and willing to work with us on finding ways to secure private funding for affordable housing or to support our efforts on that. So we're really enthusiastic about this prospect, we're really appreciative of Tidewater for their willingness to continue to be a partner with us towards this goal. They're not just giving money and leaving, they're continuing to engage with us, and we really value that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman. Next speaker, please. And if there's anybody else who'd like to speak on this item, please line up against the, the screen wall.
Hello, my name is Richard Lewis Perry, and I've known Craig and Scott and the Tidewater Company since they came, since they came out here, I guess, I don't know, years ago, and I know them personally, and I know them through business as well. The revelry feels like saying, "I am against this." Everybody here is for it, but, you know, but I can't, I really can't. Now they got your attention. You know, I used to, I, well, I came out here in California with flowers in my hair to San Francisco, and I'm an artist, I'm a fine artist, and my studio is over in the Odd Fellows Building on Seventh and Market Street, and I've been there for a score and two, you know, almost 23 years now. So I've seen a lot of things change in the neighborhood. I used to go and play pool at the Hollywood Billiards, as well as Palace Billiards, which is across the street, and the Bart came in and destroyed the whole neighborhood, destroyed everything. But in addition to being an artist and in the Odd Fellows Building, I'm also the Chairman of the Executive Committee for the Owners of the Odd Fellows Building. So I've seen a lot going on over there, and I often told people in the past that if they wanted to come to my studio, I'm over on the edge of the wino country in the Urine District, right? But I have to say that this project is a real positive step in, in clearing up that kind of image, and improving the, the MIDMA, which I refer to the MIDMA as the section from Fifth Street to Ninth Street, and it will definitely add to the ambience and of the, of the street, of the area, as well as the economic growth and impact. You know, so, what else can I say except for, so when you approve this project, I'd just like to tell you that I'm known for painting the history of the city, you know, I've been written up about that, and I did a painting of the Hollywood Billiards. So even though the building might be gone, it'd still be memorialized in my paintings, so we still have that to look at. And this is all due to their interest in the arts, you know, they, they found me and they've asked me to, to, to use my skills and my talents. So as far as the individuals of the Tidewater, they have a real definite concern for the people in MIDMA and the Tenderloin. They are very good people as well, you know, they take a personal, they take a personal interest in the community and the people that live in it. I strongly suggest and request that you approve this project. These are good guys, the project is viable and a very good one, and it will add to the impact of, of the community. I've seen a lot happen over there, and little by little, this is going to be another step in the right direction. And if I want to, I can always see Craig over in a sleeping bag in front of the Tidewater, I mean, in front of Hollywood Billiards, so he's always available to me. All right, thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Perry.